It's going to be very similar to a wash. Because some of the services we were using before were much more expensive, fourteen dollars. Yeah.
Okay.
And it's coming from our curriculum budget.
So we have a motion, do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Tennessee, discussion, Mozenee School District Plan for every student that's seen that.
Great. I will walk you through just a few of these slides because this is a new mandate and a requirement for the state of Wisconsin and to all states who are receiving federal dollars, federal and state dollars. Our administrative team, including our principals, Dr. Garvey, our superintendent and myself, along with Mary Zimmerman, have been involved in the writing of this initial plan. It's called an LEA plan because that is your local education agency. So whenever you hear about the ESSA LEA plan, that just means your district's basically assurance for equitable education for all students and kind of in your school improvement plan for the district. So we've been walking through the CSAs around the state. This is new this year. All plans have to be submitted by July 1 in order to be approved by our DPI in order to start being able to submit claims for some of the funds that we get through different title operations. So the why is they're really trying to ensure that our federal dollars and our state dollars are going towards the goodness of equity for every child. So involved in that equity for every child is really the next slide. Dr. Schultz would be great.
I'm not really sure why that doesn't show up on the agenda.
At all. Yeah, it's a multi-click. Sorry.
Thanks.
How, you know, really what they're saying is how do your existing improvement plans, which involve your building level plans, this is really a comprehensive look. How you deliver curriculum and instruction to all students. And then it delves you into layers of what do you do for the students who don't get it? What are your intervention services look like for all students? Regular education, special education, homeless students, delinquent students, absenteeism students. So it really delves into the questions that we weren't answering, which are linked into this presentation and we won't go through all of them, are really how are you currently programming for students of all languages, all ability levels, all ethnicities? Because those funds you see in that diagram have a one, two, three, four state funds. IDEAA is our special ed funding system and then our local funds. They're really requiring that you're using all of your federal, state and local dollars to ensure equitable education and accessibility for all students. So it's not really a new change for us. That's what we have been used to providing, but this is packaging it in a very large accountability plan for districts right now. So the basics are, basically as we're going to do something very similar to what we've done. You understand your current data and as we have done in Mozenee here, we will do a data retreat in August. So the systems we have in place flow very nicely into what we're required to do for our ESSA plan. We identify our gaps. We conduct a needs assessment, which is what the data retreat does for us. We develop a plan that explains how our district will guide schools through a process of improvement planning, which is our strategic district plan, but it has also been funneled through the individual building plans. And the newest piece about this is the emphasis and consult with our stakeholders. So we currently have some of these structures in place, like team leaders and building leadership and professional learning teams that collaborate and work together as teaching teams and paraprofessionals. But you will also see that there is another layer they're adding, which is this executive board of directors. So we will be looking at utilizing, if the board feels that this is a reasonable request, it would probably make sense to utilize as part of our board of directors. And you'll see another slide coming up that really defines what do I do as a board of director. Each year this ESSA plan will be due. So just like our Title I, Title II, Title III, we develop a plan, we talk about our data, how are we using our funds to target the student outcome scores and the achievement gaps that we have, and then how did that work for us? And how does that roll into the next year's plan? This is really the same thing, only it's at a district comprehensive look. So it's kind of like a district school and then putting all those pieces together. So we will have, we'll be asking for a board of directors. And this would be the role of the board of the directors, to attend three meetings. You're required to meet three times a year, not that we couldn't meet more. Provide input and feedback to these plans and share information back to our community. So if you think about the structures we have in place now, we have a data retreat that we could potentially have board, and there have been board members who have come to the data retreat and been part of that needs assessment. We would probably build into our board, our data retreat this year, a more intentional part of that for the, we're hoping the curriculum committee members from the board would be willing to serve for sure as the members of the board of directors could meet at least three board members. They're asking. It's not a actual requirement, but their best practice would say at least three board members. And then when we do, we currently have structures in place as a board where our building principals and our special ed teams report out to you twice a year. Currently in December, January, we have an update on goals and again in May, we have an update on goals. So we have some structures that we could continue to utilize that would help us meet some of the structures that they are saying are best practice in pulling out the discipline. So again, we would also, you have this board of directors and then you also need these kind of small teams that are really working on the work at the building levels. We currently have a structure in place where team leaders meet monthly with their principals and spend a half a day going through school building goals, action steps and the outcomes of those action steps. So that would be a structure that we could really build on and enhance to meet the needs of continuing to talk about our ESSA, our district ESSA plan and what does that mean for closing the achievement gaps. So again, this is a really nice visual. The district team does those things on the left, which is really the nitty gritty root cause work of our achievement gaps because that's the goal of this plan. Within the next six years, cut achievement gaps by fifty percent. That's basically what the goal of this is. So and then on the right would be, we also have a layer of having a board of directors where you would meet three times a year, provide input and feedback and share information out to the community. Again, the main focus is looking at your gaps. If you look at the diagram that Dr. Schultz has up there, the main goal is you got this plan and around that plan is not different than the way we've been functioning. This is just putting a stronger emphasis on some real targeted achievement gap work, which would be our plan each year when you meet after the data retreat anyway. Provide that well-rounded education to all students. Another part of the ESSA plan is how are you developing your quality educators through professional development and training and hiring practices? The third piece is using those evidence-based interventions and innovations to make sure that you're providing a well-rounded education to all. So that's when we talk about RTI, Response to Intervention. That is the big one. We're hitting the number three there with the goal of closing your achievement gaps. So this is really, it's a large plan that districts are really working hard the last couple of months to get put together and submitted. And this year it's really what are you currently doing? Whereas after we identify our needs assessment in the fall and start writing our plan for next year, that will be where we build those goals into action. So again, the ambitious goal of cutting the achievement gap in half for each subgroup, by subgroup they mean socioeconomic status. So your pre-reduced lunch and non-students, your special ed versus non-students, your image as a second image versus non-students and so forth. So again, we really have to look at that comprehensive needs assessment process, which is very similar to how we've been operating. You know, schools and districts have always been required to put together a district plan, a building level plan based on trends in data and outcome scores. So this isn't new, the process, but the comprehensiveness of it is somewhat enhanced for us. So we'll be working very hard. So you have links to, you know, some of the answers that we had to put together. This goes into a portal in DPI and you have to type all your answers in there and then it gets submitted, authorized by our superintendent. But again, those four main objectives are really well-rounded education for all, great quality teachers, where we provide PD and training, professional development and training to them at high levels, utilizing evidence-based interventions and practices, which the universal screening tool is one of those evidence-based interventions to help us track the effectiveness of those. That's why I said they kind of go hand in hand. And then again, making progress on closing those achievement gaps. Those are the four main objectives for every district by the ESSA plan. So if someone were to ask you as a board member, what does the ESSA plan do? What do you have to, this would be a great, you know, slide to have in your mind as the main objectives are right there. So here's just the link to the working template. This is not the actual document itself. We had to transfer all these answers into a portal at DPI for submission. But this gives you, these are the questions. So this is, we wanted to be transparent about what the questions were and as a team, how we built our responses to those questions. You do have access to that. We may have wordsmithed a couple of these answers a little bit when we actually typed them so that we were very responsive, but that is really our working document there. And I think that's pretty much the nuts and bolts of what's required by all districts due July 1 and it'll be something that continues. We can't get our, we can't put any claims for reimbursement through some of those, through some of those title opportunities and funding opportunities until our plan is approved.
For the DPI?
Yes.
Julie, is that, you know, we talked about the last curriculum committee meeting, you know, trying to change to make, could you not tie this in? It's going to be like three times a year and then run your meetings monthly, like we talked about, the short ones?
Absolutely.
So that's something get like Judy and Nelson and?
Yep, absolutely. Because we would probably ask them to be some of our stakeholders on the board of directors.
Okay.
So any potential impacts from a budget standpoint for any services?
I wouldn't say any outside of what we are currently doing, Kevin. That's a great question. We would continue to go through, you know, curriculum adoption, but as we do our standards alignment process and our curriculum mapping, mapping all of that curriculum to the standards, that falls under how we are providing equal access to all students for curriculum. So look, the kinds of processes, I guess off the top of my mind, that we would currently be doing to fulfill not only standards alignment, but building goals would probably not be anything above and beyond what we're currently doing. Just best practices and instruction for curriculum and assessment.
So on the slide that says Mozenee Plan from a thirty dollar level, strategic plan. So this is probably more of a plan long-term than we've seen here from recent?
I would say, you know, we've had a strategic plan. I think the best, and I don't want to speak for Dr. Schultz, the facets of ESSA are going to probably be at the forefront of our strategic plan that we put together.
Yeah, so it's a very granular level. I can't, I can't even see us changing because some of those goals, that's Josh's goal. I mean, you know what I mean? That's our school goal. So our broader goal of our, of our strategic plan says that we will increase student achievement. And now the very specific details about how we will do that is identified in Josh's goal. I would say all of the steps that we have taken the last four or five years in developing school goals, having our data retreats, doing all of that work that we have done.
Highly aligned.
Has, is totally aligned to what now the federal government is requiring.
Yeah, it's not too.
Realistically, everything that we did, it was so easy because of the work that we've done for the last five years. We could take everything we've already done and we just had to put it into this comprehensive plan. So it just took it down to another level.
Right. And it added in another layer of how are you providing instruction interventions to ELL kids? How are you providing, you know, really made us focus on the subgroups and the achievement gaps.
So I would say we would- Tracking the achievement gap.
Right. We might be a little more granular now under this plan with achievement gaps, but I mean, that's not something we just totally ignored before. We were always doing that, so.
That's a great question.
We really hear a lot about it. It's going to be a lot of your WAZI stuff and the ESSA plan. So it's really important and you are major stakeholders in this. So if you have any questions or concerns, we're just about ready to submit our plan. We're making some final speech on that with Dr. Schultz. And we're thinking really good about it and confident and we'll look to see which, what action steps come from our needs assessment and meeting the granular aspects of the ESSA plan for next year.
That's good. Thank you. All right. Item eleven, building committee report.
Okay, that would be me here tonight. We're all there. We approved the JAMA in our new meetings. And then we go on to new business and I will let Steve fill you in on some of that.
Well, as you all know, we definitely have a lot of projects going up to school if you're doing by. There's cars and trucks everywhere throughout that facility. So currently, our energy efficiency project with NEXUS Corporation, we are based on a demolition mode, removing all the old stuff, taking all the boilers out, all the wiring, kind of where it goes. So we're kind of in that process for the next couple of weeks. The picture that you see on the big boiler's nineteen sixty that can remove and taken apart. So things like that are happening, trying to make way for new equipment and basically working on scheduling for getting new equipment to hit our site. So we're just working on vendors and things of that nature. When's going to get to us so the guys can put their hands on it? New things to solve. So it's going very well. I haven't really had any big issues so far. So happy about that. Science room addition. We're working inside our existing school as part of that project, demolition, the old science room. Ran a lot of asbestos. We found more asbestos today. We didn't know what was in there, so we're trying to address that as we go down the line. Our goal is to remove as much of that as possible. If we're open enough, we're going to take it out and get it out of our hair. But the nature's definitely been raining on us. Our makes it are a couple of days behind. But our walls are going up and our goal is to seal that down hopefully maybe for part next week. And actually we want for the first section of slabs on the, on the east side. It's all plumbing in right now. We want to get that core tore, but we have good weather. So it's just flipping along. We'll be in that mode for next two months, basically as we push through until August. And we're also working on our gym facility right now. The new bleachers are going in. Takes a couple of weeks for them to get that all put together. We took care of all the wiring, the power wiring and data wiring. So there's access holes in the floor in the gym. Should be very nice when you run that building. And once they get to finish the bleachers, the floor guys come back in, start finishing the floor.
Where's Brady's hard hat? I said, he's just pulling wires.
He's in a contained area, so.
I got a hard hat though. Go ahead.
To get to the room, as it were. And with their sports complex, basically right now we're filling our hole in the back with product that's coming out of our streets. Now there's a lot of work from the city, so a lot of the waste product that they're digging out is going to fill our barrel pit. Well, hopefully fill it, but they've been out there dumping load after load in there, so it's good for us. No cost. Seeing what happened with that. And we're, we work with public service to get our power in. We're on their docket now. So we're just working with them when they can get on site to get our transformer set, to actually get power out there. That'll provide us a lot of opportunities for infrastructure and move forward in whatever area you want to do. Site two. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
We hit E a little bit, Kevin, and as far as our committee right now is pretty much with all the energy and the practice we are going, there really isn't a lot that we have to, I guess, put a price to or whatever. Everything is kind of pretty much for two years, Steve.
Basically, we're in a two-year cycle with our projects are slated for.
Can I ask a question on the involvement of the MCA sports complex right now? I believe Mr. Tomcek here has kind of been the forefront of the participation from the board. I don't know if he's been formally appointed for that role. You know, is that something that's a concern to the board? Is that, is there should be one or two people? You know, I'm just trying to connect dots here.
I'm not attending that as representative of the board.
Okay. So who is?
There's never been a board committee on that. There's, there never was any board committee on that. But it's a, it's a public meeting. Anybody can certainly attend. When the board initially did this several years ago, they just asked that we make this a standing agenda item so we update, so we update everybody on what's going on.
The way Corey explained it to me, where you probably can, that it is just a public, it has nothing to do-
It's no different than a girl's softball, boys' baseball.
Right. It's just an association that the board is not an entity of it, correct?
That's correct. Can I reference also a discussion item that offers information here on the budget request I had and you referenced it in the narrative? There's an expenditure list of three items in there right now. Not really a budget.
What item are you referring to?
EMC.
The energy efficiency projects, which the Hyperlight, I went to the Hyperlight, has this, three items listed in from it, giving just expenditure items in a total budget dollar. There's no real budget. I'm looking for a budget there.
We had a thirteen million dollar budget which we borrowed for, Kevin, a bond.
How we doing on that?
Well, we're under budget according to NEXUS's reports and we're doing good with the science thing too. Both of you guys are under budget on that, so I mean.
That doesn't mean-
I mean, that doesn't, but we do have another year of activity.
Do we have any visibility to that?
What?
Steve keeps finding asbestos.
Well, that's common. Really no major hurdles so far.
But yeah, the contractors aren't discussed, Kevin, so we are under budget, so that's a good problem. Because there's a lot of places that you end up with bids don't come in the way you like and you could be the other way too. So I'm glad we're on the good side with the numbers.
Good place to be.
Yeah.
So that concludes the buildings.
Well, on ten E then, you're not bringing anything forward, just kind of tabled in or you just left it?
We're kind of taking a decision as time.
So changes as is. Fire out of that.
Okay. Item twelve, personnel committee meeting report. Kevin?
You meant at six thirty, by the way, the clocks are scruffy between the buildings. Sure. We had some agenda changes. The agenda was changed to move item I to the front, to the very top of the list. And in my agenda, it became five, sub, sub one. So discussion, impossible decision, your committee accomplishing what you hope to accomplish was our leading, leading agenda item under bullet eleven here. So within that, we have, we had great discussion and decisions and suggestions to move forward. The suggestions to move forward by the personnel committee was unanimous that we initiated the personnel committee, changes that are necessary. Motion of Director of Human Resources become the active member representing the administration for the personnel committee. The second one was appoint a personnel committee to be an active member of the compensation committee. We have appointed a primary and a secondary person to be engaged in the compensation committee. We've appointed Kevin Deal to be the primary and I believe Jess, no Jess.
You were running and I was on her. She was on and I was on.
One of the, are you going to go through the policy issue though with your first?
Yeah, that's next.
Okay, thanks.
So we appointed a primary, myself, I'm sorry.
I am the alternate for the personnel committee. I am that. And then you're for the compensation.
Okay, Amy's for the compensation. Also, the third bullet that we approved, the facility chair of the personnel committee will pre-approve the agenda prior to the publication. So we can avoid some of these issues potentially jumping around a little bit. Unfortunately, well, we did also item B, discuss and appoint the alternate for the personnel committee and Jess was appointed that. And we deferred item C, D, E, F, G and H to the main board because we ran out of time. But we did have discussion, great discussion on A, review of posting position selection process and corresponding policies. We had a little kind of skip demonstration. It took a little bit of time, but it was worthwhile. It did also bring up a future agenda item, which is a deeper dive, quite honestly, into that for our, our committee to understand and appreciate with some possible changes in mind. So that's a future agenda item that I have made for our group. So at this time, we'd like to go through C, D, E, F, G and H and I'll leave the floor to Ann at this time.
Well, no, I'm just catching up here. Because if you're, if you're making a motion, because you moved I, to make these motions, and I missed that first one, I'm so sorry. That was just, is that appointing Darlene?
Yeah, appointing Darlene, the active representation from administration for the personnel committee effective July two thousand and eighteen.
Your policy on the committee says you'll have the superintendent. So what you would want to do is bring over your policy change. Because the policy says that the superintendent will be a part of the personnel, be the person on the personnel committee.
Our reading did put out waving two reads for that change.
You can't do that.
You have to notice, it would like be a future agenda item that you want to change that policy.
Right, because I think Kevin, what you're, I get what you're saying and I understand it. But looking at, because I printed this out going over the school perception committee, the personnel committee on here is listed, chairperson to be appointed by the board president, administrator, superintendent and two additional board members. So that's in our, our current policy one fifty-five. And then as far as, so that's going to kind of, kind of like a point, I know what you're saying about appointing Darlene, but then also as far as, you know, the facility, you know, you seen the report or and okaying it before the actual board meeting, that I think would have to also tie into that policy one fifty-five. Now, I know in July, correct, Steve is coming?
It's gonna start tonight, so unless he's on the date.
Oh, okay. So July, he's not coming?
No.
We can obviously go through the policy while Steve, right?
Yes, yes, we can. So what I would suggest is in not making those here because we'd have to change the policy that you bring back, policy one fifty-five to incorporate those two.
So motion, motion one and motion two, so, or motion one and motion three. So motion two, appoint a member of the personnel committee to the shop and compensation, professional compensation committee can still be standing as such.
Is that kind of like an ad hoc again? I mean, you have that.
And we were advised that Matt Ellis used to be on that committee?
It's Carolyn.
Well, I believe that's open.
So.
It's open to any board member, yeah.
So any board member?
You know, Carolyn wasn't on the personnel, she was on finance, so they better understand that she would come.
Right. So any one of those could come, correct?
Yeah, maybe OSUM and Quarterly, we bring you a full update on what occurred at those meetings.
Okay. So basically she's letting every, you know, if you're letting no one that's coming up and come do, they couldn't attend?
Yeah, we've already told you what the meeting dates are. In our final report of the year, we gave you the meeting dates for next full year. So if you go back to the agenda item from quarter four that I've shared with the board, you can already see in the full board, they come to any one of those meetings.
Everybody gets printed copy of that though, right?
No.
How do they get the information?
Right. We print off the agenda, but there's lots of links in the compensation.
So on our documentation that I submitted to Amy, items one and items three then potentially would be tabled until we can go through the policy and amend the policy.
Which you could put on a future agenda, but your, the July meeting, if he's not coming, we can still bring that forward, but I guess if you want, you know, send that to Ann and I earlier so I can see that. And as far as the compensation committee, I guess you are, and Amy is alternate, you both can attend those meetings as they're posted. You said they are posted, correct? I mean, posted, like our meetings are posted?
Nope, because they're not a board committee. But, but any, but if I knew that five of you were going to attend, then I would certainly post it.
Okay.
But we share that agenda with the full board and then we share all the details and the notes from that meeting with the full board, as we do with the entire staff. Those agendas are posted for the entire staff, the notes for those meetings are shared with the entire staff.
So currently when you hold these meetings, you're sending the email out to the board saying it's gonna be next week, this date or...
I've alr, I've already sent the four dates for you next year, you've already received that. So here's the...
No, she doesn't send it before.
No, we have the, I mean, I, we've already established what the compensation committee dates are for next school year and that was shared in our final.
Yep.
When I shared information in that fourth quarter meeting with the board, quarter number four, we shared this out with the board. At one of our last board meetings in May, we shared this out with you. And then it shares with you what our future dates are. And those dates have already been solidified with our committee. So again, every single time that the compensation committee meets, this agenda is shared.
Can you just leave that up there for a second?
Sure. I can send you a file soon.
But then if anybody attending, you would need to know that it was all...
Yes, you have to back call. That would be nice, yeah.
That would be nice, but what happens if you get five show up?
Then somebody would have to leave. Or literally if five would show up. But to be brutally honest, people say they're gonna come and they don't show up.
Or do people show up that, it's either a couple show up.
That's true. So the, you know, the compensation committee is a valuable committee, it's a great committee. We've done a lot of really great work in the last, so I welcome anybody who would like to come and learn more about that, for sure.
That has gone well.
That has gone very well.
Appreciate the patience, quite honestly, with the, the agenda as, as such here. So at this point in time, items C, D, E, F, G, and H potentially turn to forward email.
Okay.
So you, Kevin, you're just gonna rescind those earlier motions, correct? Are you gonna bring it back to policy one fifty-five for July?
Yes.
Okay, right.
Apologize for that, I closed out of our board agenda, give me just a second here, okay?
I think we should go to Bailey, sure.
Yeah, should we go to Bailey and do that, see what's underneath there? I'm sorry, fall back. So what happens, you have to change things open, right? All right, so here we go, we're on...
C, staffing reassignments.
Okay, staffing reassignments. So I shared, appointed an alternative, we already did that, okay, staffing reassignments. As we shared in our handbook, just wanted to give you a little bit of background and that's why I copied and pasted that in there. Sometimes we have reassignments. We like to let the staff know, but sometimes we have reas...